To our municipal court staff, April Spradlin, Court Clerk, and Lindsay King, Public Safety Clerk, for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the commute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hard work.
Absolutely.
All right, Brandon, next.
All right, tonight I have a service recognition for Corporal Doug Morris of our Police Department. Doug has been with the town for ten years. On June eighth will be ten years of service with the town. He's done a great job for us. He's got an extensive amount of experience in law enforcement even prior to coming to Tyrone, and we're glad to have him. So I'd like for Doug to come up and be recognized, please.
Kind of a lot of words.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay. Scott, we're going to turn it over to you for the Hanley Park Dam improvements.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
All right, so the Hanley Dam project plans for approval are being submitted to you tonight under project number PW 2024-12. As you know, Hanley Dam is located in the pond between Dublin's Downs and the soccer field and the Pendleton subdivision. The lake feeds into Pendleton Lake, excuse me. The Hanley Dam feeds into Pendleton Lake, which is a category one dam. Hanley Dam is not a state-regulated dam. We have contracted with Schnabel Engineering to provide professional services to perform a detailed evaluation of the dam. That was completed, and the details of the evaluation showed some improvements that needed to be corrected. Schnabel then did the design for the dam improvements to correct these deficiencies noted in the evaluation report. There's no land acquisition required on this project. All the deficiencies will be corrected, and the dam will be capable of handling a one-quarter PMP storm event. Also, a stream buffer variance will also be required in backside of the dam, where there's a little bit of work that needs to be done on the ditch basically leaving the spillway. The funding is SPOLOST, 2023 SPOLOST, Fund Number 322, 49, 52, 2213. Staff requests approval of the ninety percent plans set for Hanley Dam. The plan set was attached for you, so hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at it. I know it's a pretty large set. And then previous discussions were back in September of 2023, council meetings, other council meetings, planning workshops, budget requests, and all those kind of great things.
Questions?
The estimated cost is what?
The estimated cost is a little under six hundred thousand, which is what we budgeted for. Enough to cover that.
Is that the ninety percent? Or is that the total amount?
That's the total amount, yeah.
Now, if this project was not done now, how, what kind of effect would that have on us? If we waited a year or two to start this project? And I bring that up because I just think right now we've got so many projects on the hoop and that you are, you know, you're being pulled from all sides here. And I'm certainly not an engineer or know much about this, but it seems to me like, you know, if we can take, if we can take something off of your plate now, that that may be helpful with you with all the other things that you've got going on.
Well, I definitely appreciate that. Yes, we do have a lot going on. I'll be honest with you. I am, once I have somebody in the environmental specialist position, that will ease up a lot once we get them going and get them trained and all that kind of stuff. But right now, I feel like we can still do this. As far as what would happen if we delayed it a year or two, that's basically we're just betting on the weather and the conditions. There wasn't anything that's a, I would say, is a critical emergency. If that was the case, we'd be taking care of it immediately. But I think it's a good project for us to continue to move on because this dam feeds into Lake Pendleton, and we're going to be doing work on Lake Pendleton Dam very soon. And I think it's a good time to take the Lake Hanley down so that if something happens to that dam, it wouldn't affect and make and blow out all the work we're doing down at Pendleton Dam. So I think it's a really wise thing for us to get that moving. Once we get this approval, we should be able to get the plans ready and out for bid relatively soon. So I would hope that maybe by August or September, we would be getting our bids and actually starting, be able to start construction in September, November, or October timeframe, which would be a good time to get started on it before it gets too far into the winter.
Scott, because you just brought that to mind, I remember having an opportunity to go out with Devin and actually look at that dam. I actually got a chance to look at both dams, which was really cool. And the spillway, well, not spillway, but the culvert that goes underneath the road to Pendleton. So we looked at that natural stream that kind of goes up to feed. So that's where that spillway is located. It would come down and catch that stream that would run down into Pendleton?
That's correct, where we did the triple culvert replacement under SPOLOST. Yes, sir. So that, basically, when that dam is on the backside of houses along Pendleton Trail, and it runs parallel to their backyard and then curves and goes under the road at those triple culverts and then into the lake.
Yeah, and now that I think about it, because it was like some sediment that kind of builds up in that, in that turn, and I think one of the things that you did was you were able to clean that up at the last time that you put that culvert in. And I can only imagine what that would look like if we had, like, a weather, a big weather event because it builds up right there and then it could potentially cause some issues. So, thanks.
The, I know it's tough to predict, so that can't be a part of your answer. But oftentimes, when you postpone projects, the cost goes up for various reasons. Does this type of project hold that type of activity? Or is this a type of project where it's pretty consistent?
That's a very good point to bring up because the cost of everything's going up, and it's been going up for years. I don't expect that to change. Materials that we have to purchase, the human resources that are necessary for the contractor, all that kind of stuff is definitely going to go up over time. So, yes, there's a chance, a good chance, that it would escalate right along with whatever the inflation rate is, which typically is, what, three to four percent?
But to Mr. Campbell's point, I mean, not necessarily postpone it a year, but can we postpone it, say, six months to when you have your environmental specialists on and really underway good? They can take care of it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's something that we have to necessarily understand what you're saying. And once again, I appreciate the thought on that, too. I feel like I can, I can handle this and take this on at this time. The advantage to doing it now, once again, is so that when we start the Pendleton Dam, we're increasing the safety on it, and I would prefer to do that if you don't, if council doesn't mind. But if we want to do that, I mean, we could do that.
I have a question. This new guy that we're supposedly looking at, he's taking Devin's place, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Devin, could Devin do all of this stuff?
Yes, I mean, she was doing this job beforehand, but it's, the actual construction part of it is going to fall really more on me and Curtis. The part, the reason why it helps to fill that position isn't because that person is going to be physically doing that job. It's because they're doing the plan reviews, the inspections, and all the other things that are associated with that, all the stormwater complaints, all of those kind of things, grease traps, blah, 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 you know, all the stuff that goes with stormwater and environmental. They'll be able to, he will be able to start that and learn that and, you know, be able to do that. That's what will help me because then I won't have to be quite as involved in it with him like I will be at the start. But once again, this isn't any different from when we had Brad on board and, you know, I had to do the same thing while, you know, we got Devin up to speed with how we do things in Tyrone.
All right.
Devin is capable of do, Devin was capable of doing everything.
Yeah, she was very capable with what she, her work. I mean, she was very thorough with her plan reviews and, I mean, she, she set up a lot of templates and checklists and things like that to help make sure that she didn't miss anything. And that's going to be very helpful to the new employee when they come in because they don't have to create that. They can, they already have a starting point. So she raised the bar and got us to the next level. And now hopefully this employee, I think he's capable of taking it to the next.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, back to, back to item five. If there are no more questions, is there, is there a motion?
Just one more thing, Scott. When do you think would be the anticipated start time for this project, if approved?
If approved, I think we'll be able to get the bids in sometime in August, maybe September, depending upon, you know, how long it takes to get the final plans wrapped up with Schnabel based on their schedule. There's really not a lot. We might actually be able to get it sooner. But after that, it takes typically, you know, two weeks to get it to you all for approval and then two to three, depending on, you know, how the council meetings fall out.
So there's, there's a good chance that this, this new hire would be in, because it'll be a couple of months. That'll give him a couple of months under his belt or that person's belt to be of help to you.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we consider to approve the ninety percent plans for the 2024 Hanley Park Dam Improvements Project Number PW 2024-12.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number six.
All right, sir, this is consideration of a text amendment to section four dash seven of Article six of the alcohol ordinance regarding consumption in open containers. In review of the town's alcohol ordinance in conjunction with the requested modifications for parks and special events, it was found that section four dash seven was in conflict with the proposed ordinance modifications for potential sales and consumption in town parks. I believe this is what I brought to y'all's attention at the last meeting. And what I, what I have in front of you at your seats are documents we received from Legal Today. They replace the red line versions that are in your packet. But under section B, we've added the language, except as, so I'll just read the whole section. "No person shall possess an open container of an alcoholic beverage while walking, standing, or otherwise occupying any street, road, or highway, sidewalk adjacent thereto, public park, or public parking lot," and here's the new language, "except as permitted during an authorized town-sponsored event as stipulated in section thirty-six, and only in the area designated for the consumption of alcohol for said event." So that, those are the changes that make the corrections needed to fix the issue that I pointed out at the last meeting.
This is housekeeping that was necessary because of the last action taken.
Correct.
All right. Are there any questions or a motion?
I have a question. I believe there was also a question concerning identifying the container. That in another section that we'll be looking at tonight?
Not that I'm aware of. I have not been, this is, this is Philip's project. He's out of town. I don't believe that we've come to a resolution on that, Patrick.
I did a little research on my own, and there's actually a state law that I saw that said it had to be something, you know, identified either by color and by size or...
I remember you sending that out, and I was not familiar with that law. Are you familiar? I know that there are cities that have designated-type containers that you, that each restaurant has to give out. I don't know that the city of Noonan, I don't know that they have a designated container. And I know you can walk out with a, with a beverage. I don't.
Walk around, say, the town square area and, again, I know there are places that allow people to walk around, say, a town square area, and they have designated containers for that purpose. However, I think your events will be within a contained area, so that wouldn't necessarily be something you would need to do for that purpose.
So, city of Savannah, city of Noonan, the places I'm familiar with that do this, they do. They allow you to, they have an entertainment district downtown where you can walk out of one establishment, walk down the street. In our case, like he said, it's contained to one, to one controlled area.
And there'll be no issue for law enforcement with...
An open container is an open container. So if they're outside the parameters of this, you know, if our, if our perimeter is around Shamrock Park and they're in front of Veterans Park with an open container of alcohol, then they're in violation of that ordinance.
But we could require specifically...
You could, absolutely. I don't, I don't see any reason why you couldn't. You could have a very specific container with a logo. You could have a, we could design a sticker of sorts that we put on the side of any kind of cup.
And I'll point out, these will be town-sponsored events, so the town can require whatever container it wants to whenever it approves the event.
Question? Keeping us from a motion, is there a motion?
I'd like, I'll make a motion that we consider the change in the text amendment to section four dash seven of Article five, five?
Six.
Six, thank you, of public school education, of the alcohol ordinance regarding consumption and open containers.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Number seven?
All right, this is consideration of a text amendment to section four dash two zero two dash two, I'm sorry, section four dash two zero two dash two zero three of Article six regarding sales of alcohol off-premise, off-premises for catered functions. Council had a workshop discussion regarding alcoholic beverages sales off-premise for catered functions with direction to prepare text amendments reflecting changes to the frequency of holding outdoor functions, fees, and regulation of outdoor premises. And the, the new red line version for that is also in front of you. Under section four dash two zero two limitations, paragraph A, the only change there is added an off-premises license. I'm sorry, backing up to section B under two oh one, the frequency has been changed from quarterly to monthly. And then under section A, under four zero, four dash two zero two, paragraph A, an off-premises license was added. On the next page, section four dash two zero three, paragraph five, the language was, the permit fee of fifty dollars was removed, and the language as established by the schedule of fees adopted by the mayor and council was, was added there so that we don't have to change the ordinance every time we update our fee schedule. And then paragraph six was added. Area of sales consumption. Consumption of alcohol shall only be permitted within the premises which the permit has been issued. If said premises includes outdoor areas, such areas must be adequately enclosed by a temporary or permanent fence at least three feet in height with controlled ingress and egress. Those are the, that's the extent of the changes there.
I have a question about four two oh one B. So if an event facility has twelve events in a month, only one of those, I'm, something I'm reading wrong there?
Only one can be in a temporary structure. So if they put a tent or something up, only one event per month can use a tent.
So it's not structural?
Right, it's, yeah. The event centers themselves can have as many events as they want.
Got you. Go ahead, Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I just think that, I say, section four, two oh three, paragraph six, going to the second sentence. If said premises includes outdoor areas, such areas must be adequately enclosed by a temporary or permanent fence. Why does it have to be a fence? Why can't it be a tent? Why can't it be, you know, a different type of erected structure? Why does it have to be specifically a fence that is three feet in height?
I'm not familiar with that discussion.
I mean, that was the language that Philip proposed, and I said I was okay with it. I think the purpose there is to prevent violations of your open container law, to keep people from leaving the premises and going somewhere where they...
I suppose.
Be violating the law, yes.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, are we, are we being too restrictive by just calling it a fence? Like, if, if they had a sixty-foot tent that was sealed all the way around with actually only one means of ingress and egress, they would still be outdoors in a covered tent, not in violation? But it's not a three-foot fence?
It would, I would think, I, I, in thinking about this all along, I was thinking that there would be some sort of, even if we used like yellow tape around the entire park or the area that we want to contain that into, so that there's... so that there's something to designate beyond this point.
Well, and I, I want to distinguish some things here, because this isn't really about the parks. This is about events that are happening at event centers like Glendale Manor or somewhere like that. The park is going to be restricted however the town wants it to be, because the town is going to be making that decision each time. But as far as, you know, if you want to change it to I think the key here is you want there to be something that prevents people from leaving. If there's other language that you'd like to see instead of fence, we can probably work that out.
I'm like, I, I was thinking like a, some type of temporary barricade of some sort, and then I, I E tents.
We could say fence or barricade. Is that satisfying?
If you use the example of Glendale Manor, they have a, they have weddings there often, and the weddings might be down at.
Pond area?
A little Guzzi bar.
Guzzi bar. You know, make them build a three-foot fence all the way around that area. To me, that's.
I don't know that the fence has to be such that it would keep someone from, you know, it's not, it can't be an impenetrable fence, is why. I'm not saying it has to be that level of, of stopping somebody, but there needs to be something that clearly demarcates where people can be with alcohol.
I think the language originated for restaurants, take for instance, Wings and Things. Their fenced area, so they can have outdoor eating and drinking, but they can't go beyond that fence. That's where I think it originated.
I think the language that, that just talks about designating the area with signage, something like that would be more appropriate in this case.
They can be temporary.
Right. Or, or not even fence, I'm just saying just change it to where it's just, the, the, the person hosting the event is responsible for properly designating the area, be it signage, be it, you know, the yellow tape, the, 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 the white.
That makes some sense.
Plastic chains, you know, something like that. Give them the flexibility, and you say they have to mark, mark it somehow. That might be a, a more proper change for us to make.
Then in that case, are we being too specific when we say a fence of at least three feet in height?
Pretty specific. That's what I was saying, make it more flexible.
Why don't we just say by a temporary barrier or gotta be a legal word for that.
Well, where it says such areas must be adequately enclosed, you could change that to say such areas must be adequately marked.
A defined, a, a defined area.
A defined area. Adequately marked. It is subjective, but this is, the, the language that's in here is, is, is too strict.
I, I, I can propose must be adequately, adequately enclosed or adequately designated with controlled ingress and egress, is that?
Yeah, I like that.
I think it's fine.
I think what happens when, when we go back to work on stuff like this, we understand the history involved, the council's feelings on this, and, and we try to take all that into consideration, and so you, you try to put something in there that's going to make it to where, you know, you can still have your event, but there's, there are restrictions in place, and then sometimes, sometimes it's easy to go a step too far.
All right. Anybody having any other questions about the language? There a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider the text amendment with. Okay. I'll make a motion to pass the text amendment with the changes reflected in Patrick's statement to section four dash two oh two dash two oh three of article six regarding sales of alcohol off premises for catered functions.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Or number eight, Brandon?
All right, this is consideration of a text amendment to section four dash one of article six of the alcohol ordinance regarding definitions. In review of the town's alcohol ordinance in conjunction with the requested modifications for parks and special events, it was found that the definitions section for restaurant was particularly restrictive and not in keeping with the spirit of recent changes. Staff found that certain provisions regarding the minimum number of persons, layout of seating, and operating hours was overly prescriptive and not consistent with some existing restaurants currently in operation who have sought, had, or will potentially seek an alcohol license. As such, this language was simplified to be more consistent with existing and potential future restaurant businesses. So, the change there is in your packet. And most of that has been struck and added. Restaurant means any public establishment where meals are regularly prepared and served to the public primarily for on-premises consumption. The establishment must have adequate kitchen facilities and employ sufficient staff to prepare, cook, and serve meals. To qualify as a restaurant or in this ordinance, the establishment must derive at least fifty-five percent of its revenue from the sale of prepared meals for food. The service of alcoholic beverages shall be incidental to the service of food.
Questions? Clearly defining restaurant. I get a mo, want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the text amendment to section four dash one of article six of the alcohol ordinance regarding, regarding definitions.
Second.
Question. All in favor?
Can I just clarify? That's actually article one, not article six.
Read it right. Good catch, Patrick. Do you need a?
As long as that, you agreed to revise your motion.
I, I can restate it. I make a motion to approve, I'm restating my original motion, to approve the text amendment to section four dash one of article one of the alcohol ordinance regarding, regarding definitions.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we go to item eight B.
All right, so, yeah, so you all have, we emailed you Mr. Cantor's resume and all of that, so obviously after Devin resigned, we went out to, to seek someone to replace her. We got a few applicants. Thought, are you prepared to discuss that right now, or present?
Yes, sir, I can take this.
Take it, take it from there.
It's on. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, it's on.
So, yes, we put it out, actually Philip put it out on the different locations, and we received a, a fair number of, of recipients, some of which we weeded through and got down to probably seven or so that we were looking at a little bit harder, and had one that was kind of standing out to us, and we had a, like a preliminary first stage kind of interview with them, and were very impressed with them. So, that was kind of the process we went through. But I'm glad to answer any other questions that you may have on, on him. He's an intelligent individual, went two years to the United States Air Force Academy, deciding to go and be a civilian, and came back, went to the University of Georgia. He's been on dean's list, superintendent's list, more than capable of, of, I think, quickly in gaining how we do things and.
Physically, where is that applicant now?
He's physically out west. Not to get into too much detail, because I, I, I'm kind of walking a
No, that's, that's okay.
Information, so I appreciate y'all understanding when I'm not super.
Where I'm going with that is, if this was to pass and go forward, what would be his estimated time before he'd be able to start?
July fifteenth would be his start date.
They got another.
Once, if it gets approved tonight, then he will give his, you know, time from, with his current employer, you know, some notice, not just leave them empty-handed.
What, what will his salary be?
The offer was sixty-five.
Where is that in the range of environmental specialist?
Range for environmental specialist is fifty-one eight seventy-five to eighty thousand four twelve. So he's just, the, the middle of the range is sixty-six one forty-four.
Other questions?
I'm, I make a motion that we, we accept the resume from the applicant and consider offering Mr. Cantor the position of environmental specialist.
I second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, item number nine?
I guess this.
Who you, Scott?
As Dee said, this starts to become the Scott Show, so I'll try to get through this quickly for you. So, the next item is for consideration to award a John, the John Deere Angle Broom and the Rock and Brush Grapple to AgPro under state contract nine 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 hyphen zero zero one hyphen S P D zero 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 one seven seven hyphen zero zero one one, in the total amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. This purchase will give us the ability to more safely broom and clean roads of, of dirt, debris, rock, brush, and the grapple to pick those kind of things up. So if it gets pushed into a pile and stuff like that, it makes it considerably quicker in getting them up and getting it into a dump truck. So it reduces time, which then, of course, reduces safety, because we're not on the edge of a road or something like that as long. General funds is the source for this. Under Public Works Equipment Budget, it's one hundred forty fifty-four twenty-two oh one, and all these were in the budget when we did this, got budget approval last year for the, for the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Staff is requesting awarding the John Deere Angle Broom and the Rock Brush Grapple to AgPro under the state contract in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents.
Patrick, is it, is it required when the motion is made, is it required to list the state contract number? It's already been listed.
I, I don't know. Is it? Probably not.
It's already been listed, so if somebody needs to know for the record, they can listen back to Scott. Somebody have a question?
I have a question. How long will it take for you to get the equipment, if it's awarded?
My understanding is I think we can get it before the end of the month.
Fantastic.
Any other questions?
And that's on this year's.
That would be on this year's, yes, which is exactly why we're trying to push this.
I make a motion to award the John Deere, award the John Deere Angle Broom and Rock Brush Grapple to AgPro under the listed state contract in the amount of thirteen thousand seven fifty-three and seventy cents.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all. All right, next is consideration to have the mayor execute a design build amendment for the Shamrock Park Pavilion under project number PW twenty twenty-four thirty regarding final design and construction in the amount of seven hundred thousand. As part of the design build process for the Shamrock Park Pavilion, once final design and construction plans have been created, a design build contract amendment is added to the overall contract reflecting the final stages of payment. The findings in this was that the amendment reflects the construction plans, including the packet for an amount of equivalent to what was approved in the original project and budgeted for seven hundred thousand dollars. It is in our budget and included in our budget. The staff is recommending approval to have the mayor execute design, the design build amendment for Shamrock Park Pavilion, project PW twenty twenty-four dash thirty.
Questions?
God, I, I, my, my issue with this whole thing is what we're getting for it. You're spending seven hundred thousand dollars basically for just to build this thing. But there's a lot of little things that are not included in this, from what I'm understanding. You, you know, the power, I mean, what, what exactly are we getting as far as the AV? I know you've got a screen supposed to come down on that. What beyond that are we getting for that?
Let me interject a little bit there.
Thank you.
There's about a, just under ten thousand dollar allowance for AV. So we had hoped, under this seven hundred thousand splotch project, that we'd be able to get the pavilion and have, you know, AV to the point that we could do movies in the park, and if we had an event over there, we have a microphone and we can just make announcements. It's not concert quality AV. Bands are used to bringing their own stuff in. I think they prefer that. So, the power is sufficient for that. They're, they're going to be able to plug in, the DJ can plug in, and, and, or whoever's running the soundboard, they're going to be able to plug in, run their speakers, and, and have a show. That, that we are providing. We knew, I knew going into this, and I told Philip, I said, look, because Philip's original idea for this was a, a coverage stage that provided the power and all of that. I said it would be nice to have the AV stuff and be able to do a roll-down screener projector. He said, okay, we'll see what we can do. The seven hundred thousand, unfortunately, it includes, like I said, a just under ten thousand dollar allowance for that, so we're probably not going to get the AV that we want unless we increase the budget. What I propose, let's see how the project is going. We have some reserve fund, or I'm sorry, assigned fund money that was not spent or has not yet been used. Some of that was earmarked for Shamrock Park improvements. I think we should, we could probably cover it with that funding to get the AV that we need. But the intent was never to have, you know, like, like I said, where a band could just show up, plug their guitar in, and, and just start playing. That, that's not something that, that a lot, you know, especially this, this is not an amphitheater, it's a, it's a stage slash pavilion, and so that just wasn't one of the, that wasn't part of the scope. I sent you an email today. Did you get it about the water? Okay, so I, I misspoke yesterday in our communication. Water was not part of the plan. I think the designers, or the, the people we contracted with, or who've been working with, understood that to pull water to the site was not going to fit in the budget. We're also having to remove the, there was a plan for a, an additional cart path going adjacent to the lake, between the pavilion and the lake, from side to side. That's also been removed. It'll be covered in a, at a later date under different funding or something like that. So as with a lot of projects, you sometimes have to make sacrifices, or you just have to back up and, and you increase your budget if you, if you really want to do it that way. I, but I, like I said, I think for the AV part, anyway, we could certainly look at some of our assigned funds and re, reassign those to to that area to add to the ten thousand allowance that's already there.
Yeah, my, my concern is, is that we go through all this and we create this beautiful, you know, atmosphere and everything, and then nothing will ruin the evening worse than you don't have a sound system that's able to get out there. I agree with you that most bands are going to want to bring their own equipment. I mean, what we're, what we're experiencing at Shamrock Park for First Fridays has not been the best experience, but I guess he fits in the budget line, and they've been using him, and I, and I get that. I'm just trying to make this as best as we possibly can, because this is important for us as a town, that we do this and we do this right. Because this is going to be the first major project that we're going to be doing in that park, and that's all. I'm just.
Understand. I, I fully understand that.
That, it just, seven hundred thousand seems like a lot just for an open thing.
I don't disagree with that either, but, I mean, this was the low bid.
I mean, I mean, you think about a house.
I, I get it. It's, it's high, it's, you know, it's, it's, I don't know. I, I don't know enough about the construction industry to have a discussion, I mean, Scott can. I just know that, you know, I agree with you on the, on the price tag, but. But it was the low bid.
What are we getting for that? Are we getting metal, a metal roof? Are we getting metal beams?
Also, also I need to back, I mean, we've, we've already approved the budget, like, the project's approved. All we're doing tonight is, is you guys are, um, you guys are approving an amendment to the budget that confirms the, the, the project plans and also confirms the budget. But the budget and the project's already been approved. Um, when we first had this discussion back in November, you know, we understood that seven hundred thousand dollars was a big price tag. This is a S P L O S project, so that's, that's a, you know, you still wanna be careful with S P L O S dollars. But, um, it is a S P L O S project, it's not general fund.
Well, I was just curious because, you know, the one in Peachtree City.
Right, and what happened there was the city manager at the time decided instead of using treated cedar, they were gonna use untreated pine. That's the story I got from, 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 on that. Um, that was an internal decision that did not pan out well. Um, that's not a decision I would ever make.
We're not going any kind of route that way using.
Well, that's part of why the, the price tag, seven hundred thousand dollars.
That's why I'm asking.
Um, yeah, I mean, we're not.
I felt the same way about the, about the, uh, building at, at Hanley. You know, six hundred, I for me, but the fact that building pricier than.
You're already at a disadvantage as a government when you go out to bid for something. Um, I was told, uh, a year after we built this building, had we done it at that time and bid it out, it would have been almost double the cost of, of what it, of what it was. That's just what we're, to your point earlier, the price of everything goes up and, uh, it's, it's, it's probably a little bit worse when you're, when you're the government. So, no, this is not, you know, we're not cutting corners on the quality of the material, the quality of the building, or we're, and we're not, certainly not cutting corners on aesthetics. You know, we're just backing off a little bit or probably having to, we're just having to, to reevaluate how we're gonna pursue the, the A V part, which.
Right, Brandon, um, I just wanna jump in here for a second. Um, I think this is a very good way to go because if we, if we need to upgrade the A V, we have the flexibility to be able to do that in the future, right? Without modifying the structure. If we need to add a cart path in the future, we can do that without having to modify the structure. If we have to bring water over to the building in the future, we can do that without modifying the structure. So we spend the money to build the structure the way that it needs to be built right now. We can always go back and do those things without having a major project in the future. Um, and, and like you said, it wasn't intended to, to have high quality, you know, A V initially. It might be, it might suffice. If it doesn't, then we go back and we add what we need to add. Um, also, I wanted to say that I go to the First Friday events and everybody always talks about how good the concerts are, and that's with temporary A V. And so the idea that these people can use the same equipment or new equipment is gonna still add to, to the events. So I think that everybody has done a good job of what we have. I'm glad and grateful that we are building something great for the town, and if we need to improve it, we can in the future.
I have a question, um, and you may not know the answer, but I'm remembering when we did the pickleball courts and we discovered the cement under the ground. And I'm just curious, in the seven hundred thousand dollars that we've already allocated towards this, with the proper footings, with it by the lake, are they gonna be able to get down deep enough to have that, you know, not in water? And, um, is that definitely included in the seven hundred thousand that they will get it, they will get it seeded properly on proper foundation?
Yeah, designer will take, will take steps to ensure that the, because it's a structure, that the soils underneath it are suitable. Um, pickleball court is not a heavy load on it, and they were actually elevating it a little bit. So, um, there's a little difference there. Um, but being that it's a physical structure, it goes through a structural engineer and all those kind of things, and I'm pretty sure they had Geotech. Um, I think I saw it on, saw it on the pricing, the Geotech firm, um, which would be there for just that reason to determine, you know, the soil capacity, bearing capacity, things like that of the soil.
I just would not like to see them come back and say, we need additional funds to make sure that we get down deep enough or whatever is required. So I'm glad that you, I, when I look at that, I don't know what all that means. So that you can say that line item brings you assurance that they've done the proper testing, um, to get it secured.
Yes, ma'am, as much as you can. I mean, soil, you can take five steps, you can take one step away from it, one big step away from it, and it may be totally different. You know, but normally that doesn't happen, you know? So, you know, knock on wood, we're not gonna have that kind of luck with this. Um, I think we're gonna be okay with the design that they're gonna give us, um, comes through.
No, Scott, there's a lot of field dirt. Whole park.
Whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
So will they run into a problem with that not being stable enough?
Once again, when they go out there and they do the, do the testing, and, and this is Philip's project, so I'm kinda trying to fill in here a little bit. When they do that soil testing, they'll determine what those bearing capacities are. And it may require the footing to, to be designed slightly different. Um, if they're not well compacted, or it may just be a matter of stripping some off and compacting it better. Um, so there's, there's different things they can do to, to navigate or minimize things. But their goal is going to be to, to design it where it is cost effective but safe, right? So, um, in these kind of situations, this is why you want Geotech's and structural engineers involved so that we get this, we get it right, and it's safe. You know, we've heard that, we've heard things, we wanna do it right, and that's exactly why we do this.
Alright.
Can I add something to the previous discussion, um, about the cost and the water? So in the water part of it, when we go to do the big landscaping, cart path stuff, um, that's probably gonna be an ideal time when water's gonna need to come in to help, you know, water some of the grass and some of the plants at the beginning. Um, so that's probably a good time if we're gonna bring water to the actual pavilion. Um, that would, the funds in that would probably be enough to, to do that. So I would recommend probably waiting until that, that comes along. As far as the, the price, um, couple things you remember. It's commercial, not residential, big difference in building costs, okay? Big difference in codes. Um, and keep in mind, this is a design build. So this seven hundred thousand has a portion of this that's actually the design fees too. So it's not a full seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Alright, is there a motion?
I make a motion to have the mayor execute the design build amendment for the Shamrock Park Pavilion Project P W twenty-twenty-four dash thirty in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Uh, so next is the, um, consideration to award the P W twenty-twenty-five sixteen project for the, for the Town of Tyrone HVAC replacement, uh, the recreation and old P D units, uh, two, one unit each to Reservices LLC for an amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Uh, that cost is broken down into the old P D is seventy-five, or seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. And the, uh, rec center is eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars for a total of eight thou, eighteen thousand, five hundred and five. This is under the general funds, uh, building maintenance, uh, one hundred forty fifty-two dot twenty-two oh six. Staff requests approval to award the twenty-twenty-five HVAC replacement project to Reservices LLC for the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars.
Questions?
Has the, has the contractor, uh, I guess it's Reese, has he indicated what kind of freon they're using in there? Because with these new units that are coming through, um, they're changing and, you know, you just don't know what you're getting, so you need to, you need to know what you're getting. Because it won't be what you have in the other places.
Right, well, that's part of the problem with the unit and why we're having this in old P D. Um, you know, because we can't really repair that because you can't find the freon twenty, the R twenty-two anymore. And if you did, you probably couldn't afford it, to be honest with you.
It, it is expensive. I know first, firsthand how expensive it is.
Right, so we'll be putting in, you know, new units that meet new codes that are under, you know, um, using refrigerant that is compliant with all EPA regulations and all those kind of things. And we're gonna be using things that we know work, you know? I don't wanna be the first guinea pig to use something different. Well, I like to see it, you know, prove itself a little bit, so we'll be using, you know, things like the four-ten and stuff like that.
Yeah, your math isn't mathing. Um, you've got seven thousand and eight thousand, um, and that should be sixteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, the reason why it's eighteen thousand is because we have a two thousand dollar special contingency um, added to the end of the project, and that allows us to do minor additions or changes um, in order to, you know, like if something small comes up, like, you know, we realize, oh, we need to, you know, move this board out of the way so we can get it back there, and it costs another hundred dollars or something. You know, that's what that special contingency is, or we say we have a pan we need to put in here, a new pan that we didn't realize.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Did we not replace the, um, A C at the rec department a few years back?
One unit.
Yeah, there's several units there. So we have in the past, but this is the next one in line, and I believe it's an R twenty-two also, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, ma'am.
One at each location, yes, ma'am.
I have a question concerning the future of nine forty-five Sonoya Road and putting eight thousand dollars into it. What, how long are we gonna keep that? I mean, is, are we have plans? You know, I've, I know the D D A would like to probably see it gone, um, but, um.
My initial response when they, when staff told me that the, the unit went out and it had to be replaced was, it's an obsolete building, why would we spend money on it? And then I was reminded that we are still using it for voting. Uh, there is a plan to use the restrooms for the food truck park at least temporarily. So at the very least, we would need the heat element in there for, to keep the pipes from freezing in the wintertime, at least temporarily. Um, we still don't have a, 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 a solid solution for the voting issue. Um, our plan is once eight eighty-one is renovated, which that is a priority this year, and it's going into the FY twenty-six budget. Once that's renovated, there will be a large community room in that building that I believe would be perfect for voting. And I've spoken to Brianna, and she is on board with that idea. Um, they'll have to look at it, of course, but, um, we, we think that'll be a perfect solution. Then we can pretty much, you know, move away from nine forty-five. Once we, we'll have to find a restroom solution for the food truck park, but that's easy. I mean, you can get a trailer or something like that. But, um, but at least temporarily, that's the thought, is that we are, you know, we, at the, at the very least, we have the next municipal election cycle this fall. Um, I don't know if there'll be any special elections after that, but, um, so that, that's the thinking on that. It, it's a shame that it happened when it did. I had hoped that it wouldn't. Uh, um, I was hoping that we'd be able to kinda be done with maintenance on that building, save for the, the little bit of money we just spent on the stairs and the, the repairing the ceiling where this H, HVAC went out. But that's, that's the thought on it right now.
Could we recoup that unit to use somewhere else possibly?
Yes, ma'am, we, we've looked into that, um, with, uh, Reese. And the unit doesn't match any of our other units, so as far as like swapping them out with something else, no. But one of the things we can do is take the unit and store it. And then if we build another facility where it could be used, then we would use that. So you could actually make that part of the design of saying, hey, we want this unit that we have to go and take care of part of this building.
But Jessica's point, what, what do we have, two units at the rec center?
I think it's more than that.
Oh, really?
There's four.
Oh, okay. So is the one that's going in the rec center the same as going in here? Going in, oh, they're not, they're two different units?
Two different units.
Okay.
The ones at the old P D are, are more the, along the size of what you'd probably see at a residential, and the ones at rec are a little bit bigger.
Bigger.
Yeah.
Okay. Any have a motion?
I make a motion that we award project P W two zero two-five dash one-six HVAC replacement to, uh, Reservices in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars for the, uh, for the replacement in the old P D and the rec center.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, counsel. The next item is.
Need a break, Scott?
I'm sorry?
You need a break?
No.
Take a sip of water?
No, let's, let's push on.
I ready to get over.
Yeah. You gotta get home and feed the cat. So, uh, the next is consideration to award a twenty-twenty-five Hanley Park Pole Barn demolition project to the Corbett Group for a, um, bit of base bid amount of six thousand, four hundred dollars. As you guys know, you approved the, the demolition of this in a previous meeting, and now we're moving forward with this. Um, I am trying hard to get this one out and done so we can maybe get it completed actually before the end of the FY. That's my goal. Um, and the, uh, the company that was the low bidder happens to be a company that's working on the public works building there at Hanley, and they have a excavator there right now. So, um, thus the reason why we're trying to combine this, and I think that's why his, his price is so good. Um, next, uh, the budget for this is the general funds, one hundred forty fifty-two point two-two oh three, which is the grounds budget. Uh, staff requests the council award the twenty-twenty-five Hanley Park Pole Barn demolition project to the Corbett Group for the base bid amount of four, six thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, the bid tabulation is included.
Are there, are there any questions?
One quick one. Do you anticipate a lot of trees having to come down?
I don't think there'll be a lot of trees come down. I mean, obviously where they get back to it, there's a little area there that's kinda open. I'm gonna try to get them to, you know, to use that as much as possible. Um, but everything they take down, they gotta haul off, that's more cost to them, so I, I think they're gonna do their best not to do that.
Is, is there anything unique that could possibly be put in the museum? I mean.
That's that too, like barn wood.
Yeah, like.
Barbed wire and.
Yeah, I mean.
Pretty basic, uh.
Crested tin roof.
I don't know if there was any angle iron in there or whatever. It's worth asking. I make a motion to approve the, award the twenty-twenty-five Hanley Park Pole Barn demolish, just demolition project to the Corbett Group in an amount not to exceed six thousand, four hundred dollars.
Second. We have a motion, it's second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright.
For Bud?
Yep, my last one here. Consideration to, for, to have the mayor execute a contract for on-call land development and engineering plan review services with Keckenwood Incorporated. With the recent vacancy of the environmental specialist position, uh, plan review duties, duties as part of the position will need to be performed. Such plan reviews are necessary as part of the town's permitting and development process, development process. Um, basically, given the necessity of these services for dark departmental functions and efficient services to citizens and developers, allowing an engineering company to perform these functions in the absence and onboarding of the environmental specialist position was deemed necessary. This will allow the, the town time to onboard and train the new environmental specialists so that they may be certified to do the plan reviews. Until such time, Keckenwood will perform these reviews with a tapering off of their services as the environmental specialist begins integrating these reviews into their workflow. These services will also allow more time dedicated to project management, community responses from staff as they need it, as needed during high workload time periods. Included in this, or with this staff report is the scope of the services and hourly rates for said services. This is, um, in the engineering services, uh, budget. Um, staff recommends approval to have Mayor Dial execute the contract for on-call land development and environmental, and, excuse me, and engineering plan review services with Keckenwood Incorporated.
Once the applicant is in and moving, will there be a cancellation of this contract?
There could be. My recommendation is to go ahead and let it stay there because if we get in a situation where, let's say, um, the developer comes in right in there between Arrow Wood, I mean, uh, Palmetto and Spencer and starts to wanna build there and submits their, their plans, the Scarborough property, Claritin property, and they come in and hand us the Valley Wood one, and Microsoft comes in with the data centers, it's nice to have the contract in place that we could get the assistance. Now, our goal, of course, is not to use that because if we can do it in-house, we save the taxpayer. the taxpayers' dollar, so we're always going to be working that direction. I'm trying, I wanna try to get him up to speed as quickly as possible, so, for just that reason. But I'd really like to keep the contract going through the rest of the year, just in case this happens, because we, we hear the possibilities, kind of developments coming in, and ones that, you know, oh, yeah, may come in.
Andy, I can't remember, are the, are these fees passed on to the developers? In other words, does it pay for itself? Just something to consider, probably not 100% out of the general fund. There's a, I know there's a, there's a plan review fee, and I believe that covers the cost.
It does come in. It doesn't... But if you...
It's an offset. It's certainly an offset.
Cad technician won as much as you can.
Sir.
Or the intern.
Yeah.
I know how the private sector works.
Do you have any other questions? Your motion?
I make a motion to have the mayor execute a contract for on-call land development and engineering plan review services with Keck and Wood.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, for your time and patience.
All right, are there any public comments? None? Are there any staff comments?
Uh, very quickly, just a reminder that tomorrow night at 6:00 at Shamrock Park is our First Friday. It is family game night, and the Men of SAE band will be performing. And then finally, the budget public hearing is scheduled for June 19th at 7:00 PM. I sent you all an updated copy of the budget today.
I didn't see that. What was the date again?
Uh, June 19th. It'll be during your regular June meeting at, at 7:00 PM will be the public hearing. In my weekly report this week, or today, I sent you the, the updated copy of the, of the budget with some explanations for that. So you'll, you'll have, uh, plenty of time to review that before the public hearing. That's all I have. The, the approval, it will be at a special called meeting the next Thursday at 6:00 PM. That's the six o'clock meeting. Go ahead, Scott.
Microphones, my apologies. The quick comment is on Dogwood Trail. You know, we started the, the process of doing the FDR, and the contractor is hoping to push that through by Friday, but it may have to run a little over into Saturday, depending on weather stuff, so just wanted to let you know that. So if somebody calls you or whatever, you, you know that that's the reason.
When you say Friday, you're talking about tomorrow?
Ah, yes, sir, as in tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, it always is with FDR. It's a mess until we get the asphalt on it.
Any other staff comments?
I think I have a bobcat in my backyard that kinda wants to hang around, and I got three cats clawing at a window, door, wanting to get out there, and he just looks at you, and he is really weird looking. What do you do with it? What, what, what's the suggestion?
Probably hire a trapper would be the humane way to go. The, you could hire a trapper. I don't know if animal control would do anything with a wild, if it's truly a bobcat.
I think it's a bobcat, 'cause its face, I looked it on the internet. Its face looks like a cat, but the thing is, it's got a long tail.
Oh, that's not a bobcat. A bobcat has a short tail.
Not a fox.
It's not a fox.
It's not a coyote. So what could it be, y'all? It, it's, you know, to be honest with you, to look at it, it looks like one of those lizard things that kids have. What do you call those?
Aquana?
Yeah. It, it, the front face of it looks like that, but he's a...
Sounds like something out of a movie.
I mean, he's weird looking.
Not going down her street.
And he's, he's this tall, his legs are like this, and he's about this long, and he just hangs out, and, and I go out and he just kinda looks around like that.
I'm not going down her street.
I wanna come see it.
I wish I could get it on video, but I'm, I'm too nervous when I'm seeing him to try to do anything.
Are there, are there any other council comments? I am playing phone tag with the guy at CSX, and we've traded calls about four times this week, but he is already, he wants to loop his engineer in on the call when, when we do. So regarding their sentiments on the trees, on, on the dam, legal has already said that his, doesn't matter, but it'll still be our decision. That's the only council comment I have. Does anybody else have council, council comment? All right, is there a need for executive session?
There is not.
Their motion to adjourn?
I moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Be, be to it.